...meeting, my name is Sina Najad and along with my hardworking co-chairs, I welcome you to our meeting. Please remember that put your cellphones on silence and if you are going to make comments, keep your comments to three minutes. Please be respectful of other people's opinion, do not interrupt people. If you need to speak, just motion me and I would be delighted to put you in the queue to talk. With that said, please call the roll.
Chairman Najad.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Javid absent, Commissioner Little absent, Commissioner Maiken.
Here.
Commissioner Noyola.
Here.
Commissioner Karishi absent. Oh, that's Commissioner Javid. And Commissioner Sinigor.
Here.
Commissioner Steinhagen.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. If you would remember to give me a form to sign, I will be abstaining from one of the cases this afternoon. I trust that everybody received the minutes of the last meeting and the agenda for today. I hope that you have reviewed it. If you have any comments, I would be happy to hear. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I see a move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. We're gonna get going with the first case, Mr. Boone, PZ 2021-198.
Good afternoon. A PZ 2021-198 is to consider a request for preliminary plat approval of the crossing at Pine Island Phase Two Beaumont-Jefferson County. Jeremy Mitchell with Saltech Surveyors and Engineers has requested this preliminary plat approval of the crossing at Pine Island Phase Two. This preliminary plat will consist of 24 lots and a detention pond to be maintained by the homeowners. Water will be supplied by Meeker Water District and each property will have onsite septic systems. The 32.99 acre property lies at the edge of the planning area but is not within the planning area substantially. As such, it is required to meet the City of Beaumont design standards. You may recall the planning area was created to allow developers the option of conforming with Jefferson County standards as opposed to City of Beaumont standards if the development is located within the ETJ but more than two miles from the city limits. So just to restate that again, if you're within the five mile ETJ, plats have to come before the Planning Commission or the Planning Commission staff. If you're within the first two miles of the ETJ, you have to comply with city standards. If you're beyond the two miles, so from two miles to three miles out, then you can comply with county standards. So having said that, I'll also mention that the subdivision ordinance's design standards for rural streets, which this is proposed at, Section 26.03.002-11 are as follows. Rural streets may be provided in neighborhood-zoned agricultural residential or AI or outside of the city limits but within our ETJ jurisdiction with lots conforming to the AR district. A single outlet rural street shall serve no more than 24 dwelling units and may be 800 feet long as a cul-de-sac. A rural street shall have a 26-foot right-of-way with a 20-foot concrete pavement. I think that should be 60 feet. Okay, I misread that, I apologize. A 60-foot right-of-way with a 20-foot concrete pavement. Curbs are not required and open roadside ditches shall be used for drainage. No parking shall be allowed along the rural street right-of-way. The streetlights shall be at each intersection but may be spaced at an average of 600 feet between intersections. So let me just state, normally a residential street in our ETJ or in the city is required to have 50 feet of right-of-way and 26 feet of street frontage with curb-and-gutter streets. So not open ditch, gotta have curb-and-gutter streets, sidewalks, streetlights, et cetera. However, in the subdivision regulations, there is an exception for what are called rural subdivisions. And so, as mentioned, rural subdivision lots tend to be bigger, so it refers to the AR zoning district, which are larger lots. But if you, and they're limited to 24 lots, and the cul-de-sac length is limited to 800 feet. But the streets can be, not only can they be open ditch drainage, but the streets only have to be 20 feet in pavement width. So essentially, it's a little bit of a more less stringent standard. It's a rural standard. Sidewalks are not required. But the idea is you have bigger lots out in a rural area. So the applicant has proposed a rural subdivision. However, not all of the requirements that are spelled out in 26.03.02 have been met. So I'll go ahead and read the rest of the staff report. Many of the proposed lots do not meet the minimum size for AR, which require a minimum lot width of 200 feet and a minimum lot area of one acre. The applicant is requesting a variance to the lot size and width requirement. The reasons for the variance are due to the fact that a third of the property that's in question is located in the regulated floodway. And again, the southwest corner of the property crosses into the planning area. But again, a substantial amount of this subdivision is not in the city's regulated ET, or city's planning area. And furthermore, the length of the proposed roadway is approximately 1,491 feet. The subdivision regulations require that the street be no more than 800 feet, as mentioned prior. Again, a variance has been requested for the cul-de-sac street length. The applicant states that the request is due to one-third of the property being within the regulatory floodway. There's also an adjacent pipeline corridor. And they're actually proposing the street width to be not 20 as required in the rural regulations, but they're proposing a street width of 24 feet, so a little bit wider street, giving room for more vehicles. The applicant has also requested a variance to the sidewalk requirements due to the rural nature of the development and open ditches that do not leave room for the sidewalk. The applicant states that Jefferson County Engineering is requesting wide ditches and wants minimum culverts due to drainage, which eliminates the ditches being filled to accommodate the sidewalks. So in essence, they're saying they don't want to install the sidewalks because they've got to have the wide-open ditches. Next, the variance is being requested for streetlights. Those streetlights are required. Every 600 feet, the subdivision would be connected to city utilities, would not be connected to city utilities, rather. These streetlights would not be operational unless connected to private utilities. So again, you may recall that when we implemented the two-mile planning area, one of the reasons was is the county was telling us that they don't really, well, they don't provide electrical service for streetlights. And so the current regs are requiring installation of streetlights, but they weren't really being activated, so... Again, if this were a little bit further out, they would not be required, but because it's just barely within the two miles, they are being required. So they are requesting a variance in the streetlight requirements. And then going on, the entire plat is located in flood zone AE, defined as areas within a 1% chance of flood in any given year. In addition, a large area is designated as a floodway. Development in the floodway should be avoided but will, at a minimum, require a no-rise certificate per Jefferson County standards, which should be indicated on the plat. Jefferson County Engineering and Drainage District Number Six have requested changes to the plat concerning drainage and utility easements. So if the commission, well, let me go ahead and show you. Well, I've got the proposed plat in front of you. And again, it's a little hard to see, but hashed area to the left or the west side of the plat, you can see the detention pond. A lot of that is the floodway that was mentioned. You can see the cul-de-sac there, again, as mentioned, is greater than 800 feet. And you can see the lots in question are large, but they don't quite meet the AR standard. But having said all that, if the commission should choose to approve the plat with the requested variances as outlined, staff would recommend the following conditions. Number one, that a note be included on the plat stating that all development in the regulatory floodway will require a no-rise certificate based on development plans prior to construction. And number two, that lot line should stop at the Drainage District Number Six easement. The easement may be deeded to the district. And again, that's based on the request by DD6. But with that, are there any questions of staff?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
On the language you just said, where the easement may be dedicated to DD6, shouldn't that should be dedicated?
It certainly could be. Yeah, it certainly could be.
Mr. Boone.
Yes.
I don't want to put you in a position, and I don't want to sound mean, but in every case that I have reviewed in the last few years, you always either recommend or propose to deny it. This thing doesn't comply with just about anything that we have, and you just say, if the commission chooses to approve. So what is the city's opinion in this?
So for several years, we had been receiving waiver requests. Staff would include them in the staff report, they would be approved, and we would move on. I would say within the last year or so, the question posed to staff is why are we recommending this? Because it doesn't meet the requirements.
That's what I asked you several times.
Correct. So in the subdivision regulations, the rules are fairly clear. This is what's required. It's not a very, it's not a very thick book, okay? This is what's required. But also in the subdivision regulations, there is a variance waiver section, okay? And I'll go ahead and read it for the benefit of the commission and the public. Where the Planning Commission finds that extraordinary hardships or practical difficulties may result from strict compliance with these regulations or that public interest may be served by an alternate proposal, it may approve variances to these subdivision regulations so that the substantial justice may be done and the public interest secured, provided that such variances shall not have the effect of nullifying the general intent and purpose of these regulations. And it goes on, but the reason why we've changed it up, it's again, I would say within the last year or so, the question was posed to staff, why are we recommending this if this doesn't meet the minimum requirements of this book? And so what staff is doing is we are simply saying, these are the issues that are not met. In other words, regulations that have not been met. However, an applicant always has the ability to ask for a waiver or a variance subject to this section. But what this section says is the Planning Commission determines whether or not that burden of proof, in other words, is the variance or waiver justified. So the reason we write it like this is because I feel like staff's position should be to identify what issues there are. Whether or not a variance or waiver is justified really should be the decision of the commission. In other words, it's almost like y'all are acting as the Board of Adjustment for the zoning ordinance. Now, when we take an item to the Board of Adjustment, zoning Board of Adjustment, we don't make a recommendation. We simply present the facts, and then the board makes that decision as to whether or not that burden of proof... In other words, are there particular circumstances out there that exist that warrants a waiver or a variance? And so that's why we're presenting in this manner.
Well, I love Mr. Mitchell to death, and he's a great engineer, but in this case, you don't have one, two, or three. Every portion of this thing is out of compliance from what you're reporting.
We have several waivers requested.
Okay. So we'll hear from Mr. Mitchell in a minute. Anybody else has a question?
Yeah, I have a question. If development in a floodway should be avoided, then will anyone be liable for damages if something actually happens to those individual homes that they're there?
Yeah, I don't...
The answer to your question is anybody can sue the city, no matter what.
Yeah.
And we have to defend ourselves.
Somebody would be held accountable, it would appear.
Right. And with this being in the county, it's gonna follow the county's floodplain regulations. But again, we felt with this being not just in the zone but in the floodway, that we felt like this condition that we've referenced should be on the plat. And if you look at the plat in question with that, kind of that hash mark, well, you know, you can see several of the lots in question, you know, will be impacted by the floodway. Because of the scale of it, the developer has indicated to us that they think there's enough room on those lots to build, still be able to build but be outside the floodway. Having said that, when you disturb land in that area, dirt in that area, that's gonna trigger the no-rise. So that's why we felt like that condition is in there.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Mr. Mitchell. Good afternoon, my friend.
Good afternoon. Jeremy Mitchell, Saltech Surveyors and Engineers, 3737 Doctors Drive. Also have the developer in the audience, if you'd like to speak to him as well. Chris did a good job at summarizing. It was a lot to say, but at the end of the day, we're basically asking for a variance for lot sizes and the cul-de-sac length, with the supplemental being, of course, the streetlights. That's not a prime point of it, and the sidewalks, again, not a prime point of the subdivision. We came before the board last month for Phase One along the main road at that time. That plat was approved. The lots within that plat are the same sizes that were proposed here, three-quarters of an acre. Prior to even beginning the conversation with the city, the developer had met with the county. His intent of this subdivision is to be a private road subdivision. And so as such, he went to the commissioners and they had some rules that were antiquated. They required minimum two acres. He'd worked with them over quite a bit of time, and the Commissioners' Court approved smaller lot sizes basically based off of TCEQ lot size requirements for water and sewer. So then we come to where we are now. It is true, we have a large portion of this which is in the floodway, and when you disturb the floodway, you need a no-rise certificate. So one of the primary reasons you see the plat before you the way it is is we wanted to create lots that had buildable area outside the floodway, even though portions of the lot was within the floodway, to try to eliminate that as a problem. One of the things that we did early on in conjunction with the county was we talked about drainage. Drainage is very sensitive in our area, especially out in Jefferson County. So the new engineer is very savvy, very smart. We sat down, we looked at it. She had some problems on South Pine Island Road. She looked at ways that in doing the subdivision will also help the county. We got with the Drainage District, you'll see a pond on there to try to, again, alleviate some problems. So yes, we do have some issues with a lot size, and yes, we do have a problem with the cul-de-sac length. But the cul-de-sac length is nothing outside the ordinary, what you would see over at Dogeys. We're right on the edge of the planning area. So when we looked at this, we're not in front of you just trying to throw whatever at the wall and see what sticks. It was methodically thought out, what we could do with the property, where we were, and we felt we were at a point where the hardships justified what we were asking for. So primarily, we're asking for that cul-de-sac length, and we're asking for the lot size requirements.
Thank you. You see where this is going. We give one to Doge, now you want one, and then tomorrow, another one, and another one. So that's called setting up precedences that we shouldn't, number one. Number two, if we're gonna approve the reduced lot sizes, why can't we take some of those lot areas and have sidewalks?
All right, sidewalks is an interesting thing to talk about. So we're gonna be a rural subdivision which is open ditches. So the rule is 60-foot wide, 20-foot road. So what we're doing right off the bat is we're going with a 24-foot wide road with shoulders, three-to-one side slope ditches to lay this thing out, flow gracefully, because we're gonna have some depth to the ditch. By the time you do that, you're left with just a few feet on either side that's actually within the right-of-way. And so by the time you roll your ditch up, there is effectively no place for a sidewalk. And that's really why we're asking for the variance, is there's physically not a spot for it. The county has started going towards the decision of, we don't want our ditches filled in, because when you fill in a ditch, you have no place for the water to go. So, you know, if we were allowed to culvert the whole thing, we could set a sidewalk on it with no problem. As for precedents on this versus other things, the mechanism of a variance is for a hardship, and just because it applies to this doesn't mean it applies to the other. We're not asking for the board to just rubber stamp everything from here on out. Again, we felt that the function of the variance is being satisfied in this particular case.
Thank you. You always do a good job.
You say it could be a private subdivision?
Yes, sir, private road subdivision, and there'll be a homeowners association to take care of the pond.
Will it be gated?
Yes, I want it gated. Yes, sir.
How many lots are in the floodway?
Eight lots. It's that line that you see that cuts through there on that one side at kind of a 30-degree angle. And you'll see that in front of it, those lots are fairly deep. And so again, we left enough room to get a fairly good-sized house in front of it, with the understanding that we'd still have to do the no-rise.
Are you guys gonna declare this to the potential buyers?
Yes, it's gonna be a matter of record on the plat. The Jefferson County engineer has language that they're putting onto the plat to try to let them know these things. I think Adena had some comments about it as well, so it's gonna be well-known. The developer's also the builder, so there'll be that component as well for him to explain. You're gonna have all that in your restrictions and everything, correct?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions for the gentleman? This does not require a public comment, so with that said, we heard from the city, and we also have heard from the applicant, and I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve 198 with the conditions.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Mr. Mitchell, you did a good job. PZ 2021-211.
Okay, file PZ 2021-211 is to consider a request to vacate the replat of Lot 1, Cummins Place, and a 2.3 acre tract H. Williams survey into lots 1A and 1B, Cummins Place, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. Darlene Wisby has requested to vacate this plat in question. Ms. Wisby had intended to purchase the portion of land conveyed in the plat but decided to not proceed with the transaction after the plat had already been filed. Therefore, both Ms. Wisby and the Bushnells wish to cancel the replat and reestablish the property as it existed prior to the recreadation of the plat, which was filed April 22nd, 2021. Ms. Wisby, Clayton L. Bushnell Jr., and Robert Lee Bushnell are the sole owners of the property and have all signed the letter of request. The planning staff recommends approval of this request to vacate this plat, recorded in April of this year.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Boone? This is pretty straightforward. I don't think we need to hear from the applicant. Does anybody wants to talk to applicant? All right, I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Mr. Boone, 214.
Okay, file PZ 2021-214 is to consider a request for approval of a replat of a portion of Lot 18 into lots 18A and 18B, Annie T. Warren Subdivision, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. Scott Bracken of Access Surveyors has requested approval of this replat. The intention of the plat is to divide the property into two lots. All utilities are present and available. You can see before you the proposed plat. We have sent out six notices to area property owners. We've received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Planning staff is recommending approval of the proposed plat, replat, rather.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is the applicant in the audience? Nope. Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from the staff, and there is no opposition. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, File 214.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second for Mr. Javid. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Boone, 234. You keep this up, we might get home in a certain good time, huh?
We will try. Okay. File PZ 2021-234 is to consider a request for approval of a replat of lots 1 and 2 into tracks 1A and 1B, Block 20, Calder Highlands, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. Stacy Garza of Saltech Surveyors and Engineers has requested approval of a replat of 1 and 2, Calder Highlands, Beaumont-Jefferson County. The intention of the plat is to divide the property into two lots, allowing a new home to be built on the vacant lot. All utilities are present and available. I think we just have the plat in front of you. We did send out 13 notices to area property owners. We've received, let's see, one in support from Mrs. Maxwell, and one response in opposition from Nathaniel Welch at 1320 Central Drive. And he's opposed simply because, he's arguing that we don't need this kind of density of housing. And I don't think we have, in your staff report, you should have a vicinity map, but essentially, this is a large lot on the corner of East Drive and Gladys, and they're proposing to add, basically split the lot, adding a new buildable lot on the east end of the lot along Gladys. And the dimensions of the proposed lot would meet the minimum requirements of the subdivision regulations. It is, it would be a buildable lot, and as such, we are, staff is recommending approval of this application. Any questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Is the applicant in the audience?
Jeremy Mitchell, Saltech Surveyors and Engineers, 3737 Doctors.
Not Stacy Garza.
Not today. She's bringing her kid to college today.
Go ahead.
Again, Chris summed it up fairly well, just trying to take what was two lots and has a house in the middle and split it back into two again, just in a different fashion. From the rear of the house to the rear of the property line, we have 34 feet, so we do have quite a bit of distance from the rear of the house. It won't be cramped. It does meet the minimum requirements for the smaller lot, track 2B. He wants to build a residence.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and Mr. Mitchell, and I would entertain a motion.
I see a move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Boone, 239.
Okay, file PZ 2021-239 is to consider a request for approval of the minor plat of Jackson Powell Edition, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. Richard Faust of Faust Engineering and Surveying has requested approval of a replat of the minor plat of Jackson Powell Edition, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. Both properties are owned by one individual, but the lot line encroaches on one of the structures. To resolve this encroachment, this plat proposes moving the lot line so that both structures are equal distance from the new lot line. The moving of the lot line will widen Lot 2, but it will still not meet the minimum width requirements of the ordinance, which is 50 feet wide. Now, the applicant is requesting a variance to the lot width of Lot 2. The new lot will be 49.19 feet wide along Jackson Street and 48.11 feet wide along Powell Street. Again, city ordinance states, Section 26.03.07A, minimum width, depth, and area. Lot shall have a minimum width, depth, and area of not less than that required by the zoning ordinance for the zoning district in which the lots are located. The property at 885 Powell is located in, is zoned, rather, as RMH Residential Multifamily High Density, and the minimum lot width for RMH is 50 feet. So again, this is an example where it's not meeting the minimum requirements of the subdivision regulations, but they are requesting a waiver of that if the... but they are requesting a waiver of that. Uh, if the waiver is granted, uh, staff does recommend approval of this minor plat. And I don't... And again, I, there, there are structures on that that lot, and so this, this shifting over of the line, um, again, it would still be below the fifty foot minimum, um, but it would at least be addressing one issue they have, and that is the setback issue.
How old are the structures, Mr. Boone?
Um, I would estimate they're over fifty years old.
Yeah, so there's not much you can do other than, I guess he's doing the right thing.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Boone? Thank you, sir. Mr. Faust? Good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Faust. I'm with Faust Engineering and Surveying in Beaumont, Texas. Our address is fifty-five fifty Suite O in the great city of Beaumont. Um, um, Mr. Boone didn't have this. If I may pass this around?
Please.
This is a partial survey of the property showing how we have an encroachment along the property line. And, um, I think we're doing our best to fix the issue. I apologize about it.
That's okay.
I expected it to be on the screen, so, um, so I had to survey the property for a residential survey. We realized that we had an overlap on a property line and attempting to do the best we could. We could either have two lots in both lots or, uh, don't meet the zoning requirement or one lot that meets it and one lot that's a foot, foot and a half shy. Um, and Mr. Boone's, uh, staff, we figured that was the best way to do it. I will say that both, uh, lots meet the minimum area requirement in the, uh, zone that they're in, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Faust.
Thank you.
It's pretty simple. Any questions, comments from anybody? I would entertain a motion.
So move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. This concludes our regular meeting, and now we're gonna start our, uh, uh, joint meeting with, uh, the Honorable Mayor Mouton. That's gonna lead us into the next one. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. May I have a real call, please?
Mayor Mouton.
Present.
Mayor Pertham Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Felshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
And Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Today we will be the planning and zoning and, um, uh, Beaumont City Council. Today will be the only day that you will have to ask any questions about any of the items that are on the agenda today before City Council meets the following week. So if you have any questions, please make sure that you do so on today because this will be your only opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We get started with, uh, PZ two zero two one dash two three one.
Okay, uh, file PZ twenty twenty-one dash two three one is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow, uh, the expansion of a cemetery in an RMH residential multifamily, uh, high-density dwelling district. Uh, Community Cemeteries, Inc. has submitted a request for a specific use permit to allow the expansion of a cemetery at thirty-nine sixty-five Scranton. Uh, the cemetery was previously expanded in two thousand one and two thousand nine. Uh, this latest expansion incorporates zero point one three acres immediately south of the previous expansions. Uh, no buildings or other instruct- or other structures are proposed, uh, for this time. The only improvements will be private drives, ditch culverts to provide access to the property, and drainage swales. Let me go ahead and show you the, uh, slides. This is the, uh, site in question. Uh, the existing cemetery again extends, uh, southward from Gill. And this is a closer view, and you can see the headstones, um, in the, in the photograph here. Hard to see, but this is the, uh, proposed plat with the, uh, with the plots shown, uh, in green. And you can see the other expansions to the north in prior SUPs. Uh, this is a view to the subject property and to the north. A view to the northeast. Uh, to the east. East and southeast. To the south. And, um, I should say that upon review, uh, staff noticed that it appears that some of the graves to the north, uh, at this location may be placed or may be located within the city alleyway. And so in the staff report, we had mentioned that a survey needed to be provided to confirm the location of the graves and or the headstones. And so in the, in the time between the staff report being prepared and today, uh, a surveyor did go out. And this, this reflects, uh, the survey, which you can see in red, would be the headstones or markers uh, that are located within either the city right of way to the east or the alleyway to the west. Uh, and since this has occurred, they have shifted, uh, the headstones a little to the east and or to the west. So you can see this is the new locations, uh, shown in blue, uh, both of which appear to be outside of the city right of way or alleyway. We did mail out thirty-two, uh, notifications to area property owners, and we received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Uh, at, based on this, staff is recommending approval, um, subject to the condition, provide a survey to locate graves to the north that appear to be in the alleyway. If graves are in the alleyway, alleyway must be abandoned by community cemeteries. And again, it would appear that this condition is, uh, is addressed. But with that, are there any questions of staff?
So, repeat the last sentence you just said. The alleyway must be abandoned by?
By the cen- by the, um, basically the cemetery company, so...
They own, they own the alleyway or the city?
The city. So when we first identified the fact that it appeared the headstones may be within city right of way, one option was to rectify that by moving them. The other option would be for them to, uh, uh, you know, request abandonment of the alleyway, which of course would come to this body, would come to the city council, go through that process. Uh, so that was another option, but it appears in the intervening time that they've gone ahead and and shifted them, so. But they may still want to pursue that option, but, um, but that's why...
But the fact remains that the graves are in the alleyway, right?
Well, it would appear the headstones are not, but I would defer to the company as to where the...
Well, uh, what I'm getting at is respect, the respect for the people that are out there. Could we abandon the alleyway right now with this thing so they don't have to go back and forth, or does it have to be something later?
It would be a separate process.
Okay. See, I'm trying to help people and you won't let me.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we have it. Any other, any questions for the gentleman? All right, so we have, is the applicant in the audience? Are you the applicant, ma'am? We'll, we'll get to you in a second, if you don't mind. Let me hear from the applicant and then we have a public hearing. Thank you, ma'am. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
How are you today?
All right. My name is Clayton Mayfield, and I'm representing the, uh, the applicant. Uh, I live at twenty-two ninety-five Thomas Road here in Beaumont. Uh, any other information you need?
Just, just tell us what you're about to do, Mr. Mitchell.
Well, what we have gone, already gone out and done is probe those markers where the, uh, headstones were to make sure that no vaults were underneath those headstones. And what happened is they, for some reason, the headstones are slightly shifted, and they were shifted several inches, I think up to eighteen inches, from where, or from over the vault. And all we did was move them back to where they should have been, and there's no vault that is, that runs in that alleyway on either side. And so we wanted to do this in advance because, uh, it would have required us, if the vaults were there, to contact each and every, uh, person's family who is, uh, buried in, on the, in that alleyway to see if we could shift them over before we did anything. So, uh, we have ma- uh, been assured that there are no vaults there, that it, that we could move the, uh, the, the headstones. And so we've tried to comply with everything that this planning and zoning has requested.
Well, as respect to the people that are buried there, you might want to get with Mr. Boone and and get that alley abandoned so you don't have to go through it.
That's our next step after this.
There's no reason to disturb any of that.
Okay.
Okay, any questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much, sir. Have a great day. We've heard from the applicant and we also heard from the staff, and we know the situation with the alleyway. So is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon to you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Bree Barnes, and I live at the thirty-nine twenty Scranton Avenue.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is almost directly in front of the cemetery, and we're having a lot of issues already with, uh, unfortunately, it's a lot of young kids that's buried there, and their friends come out at night, all during the day. And they have the balloon releases, they play their music real loud, they, uh, they all during the night, during the day, they swerve up and down our street. We can't even allow our kids to play like kids should be able to play because we don't know what's next. They block our driveways, they park in our driveways. We literally had to have a confrontation almost with the person that I asked to please stop blocking my driveway, and it wasn't good. We had to call the police out to just get in our driveways, and, um, it's just, it's unbearable now. It's getting worse. They stay out there all night, they're drinking, they're partying, and it's, it's just overwhelming. So I'm definitely objecting this because it won't get any better. It'll continue to get worse.
People drinking at the graveside?
They're, they're, they're having birthday parties, literally, for their friends that has passed away. They're releasing balloons, they're smoking, they're drinking, and they're, it's, it doesn't stop. It just keeps going, and birthdays after birthdays, and they block our streets, and they swerve all down the road, and they hanging out of the, their car windows. It's horrible, and it's getting worse for our families. So I, I object it because I, I can't even, I have grandkids, and it's just getting worse, and you can't say anything to anybody. I have a new neighbor on the right side of me, just, just blew her mind because she says she's never seen anything like this before. Well, it's been there. I've been where I'm at since ninety-seven, and when it crossed over, I didn't know. It just took one voice to prevent it. Had I've known, it just took one voice. I would've done it then where it wouldn't have never crossed over. And for, at the time, I think it was Mr. Taft that owned it. I didn't know till recently. My dad died a year ago. He said, "Well, we're beautifying y'all's neighborhood," and I thought that was just like a slap in my face. I told him, I said, "If you want to beautify neighborhoods, put a park here so our kids can have something to do." And other than watching the drugs and the drinking and whatever else they decide to do. They shoot in the air with their guns. I mean, we don't know what else to do.
Well, thank you for finding courage to come and talk to us. I appreciate that, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. The gentleman, uh, if you would come up, uh, you heard, you, you heard the lady with the neighborhood, and it seems like that she is having grave problems with what you guys do or what you don't do as far as controlling the people over there. So what is your comeback?
I, all I can say is, uh, I will try to, I, I asked her earlier before the hearing started to talk with me, to let me know what her problem is, to see if we could work together to work something out, and she said she wanted to make her comment first before I said anything. Now that I know her comment, I will go back and attempt to work with her, at least to put chains or gates across the driveways. But at the same time, during the daytimes, we, we can put chains maybe across the driveways at night to keep people from driving in there and going in. But how do you control a cemetery so that people cannot go and visit their loved ones? You know, it's gonna put, you know, we can, we can do so much, but we can't do, do too much. We can put chains up at night or after a certain time, but if it's during the daytime or if they choose to walk into the cemetery, how do we control that? I'm not sure yet. All I can do is try to research it and, and, and get back with you.
Well, as the...
Nighttime should be a limit.
Yeah, we can say at nighttime, there will be a, a limit on who can go back there.
Or post some signs.
Yeah, post signs on it, but that's a thou shall not, and you know what I mean?
Yeah, we can try it. We can try it, and we can say that it's posted, but, you know, that's a, I'm not sure how we do that.
But sometimes people come in to see their loved ones after five or after six, especially during the summertime.
Well, as the owner of the property, you, you have the, you have the duty to make sure that you're not, you don't become a nuisance to the neighbors. And that's very important. I know there's an existing cemetery. You can't, even if we deny this, there's still existing cemetery and people are gonna come and go.
Mm-hmm.
So I would think that if we choose to approve this, we should have some restrictions on what is it that you're gonna do in, in being a better neighbor?
We will, we will put gates up, we will put signs up, restricting it, uh, and I will work with, uh, try to work with the neighbors to see what we can do to do that, but, you know, I'm gonna have to, uh, though I'm a lawyer, I'm not practicing anymore right now. Uh, I will con- uh, get with our attorneys and see what we can do to restrict. In, in the same way as I've got to respect the rights of the loved ones of the persons who are buried there.
Oh, you can put cameras out there for night.
Yeah.
Most, uh, perpetual care cemeteries have a closing time with a gated area, a lit area. Most perpetual care cemeteries that are under the rules set by the state have a closing time with a gate, maybe some lights. Would you consider, uh, maybe talking to...
It is not a perpetual care cemetery, so, you know, this cemetery has been going on since I'm seventy-two years old, and it's, uh...
You're young.
Yeah, so it's been, it's been there my entire life, and so, uh, it, it was not formed as a perpetual care cemetery under the laws, you know, in the fifties, so now it's, you know, it doesn't qualify for some of those same things.
You, you've already said that you'd be willing to reach out?
Yeah.
And talk to, uh...
I tried it before, before I even came up here.
Well, that's very nice of you. If, if you have gates and signage, at least now you have a way when every week you drive out there one night and you see people not doing and obeying the sign, at least you can call the cops.
Okay.
Now there is a sign that they know they shouldn't be there. Uh, I want to make sure that this is, you're not, you're not being a bad neighbor.
We will get it done.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
And, uh, is there anybody else that would like to talk about this case?
May I say, you know?
Well, I, I think we've heard you, and, uh, we, you did complain, and, uh, he is gonna try to comply. And if, if this doesn't happen, you can contact Mr. Boone, and we'll find some other remedies for you. But if, if, if anybody chooses to, uh, make a motion, they would probably add the, the gates and the signage to, to this case. And that should give you some remedy better than yesterday, and we'll see what happens tomorrow. I'll promise you, we, we've heard your problem, and we're gonna try to do something. Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I would, I would like to know what would satisfy her other than abandoning the...
You can, you can always ask her to come back. We, she had a chance to speak, so by rules that we have, she had one chance to talk, but you are more than welcome to ask her to come back, and I wish you would. Ask her to come back.
Come back when?
Right now.
Ma'am, would you please return?
I, I did not do it because... I, I did not do it because we do.
I understand, but I would, I'm curious to know what would satisfy her.
The only thing that would satisfy me is for it to be no. Because it is not going to stop. No gates, these people gonna tear down these gates. It's not gonna stop. No gates, no cameras, none of that. I've been there since nineteen ninety-seven. I was born and raised on Scranton Street. The cemetery that this gentleman is speaking about is on the opposite side of Gil Street that's been there all my life. The cemetery that, that, that crossed over is just, is from oh seven or whatever. So that, there's, that side of Gil is gated. I mean, it's not closed where they can still drive through, but it's gated. There's no parking, they park anywhere. This is not going to stop. It's not going away.
If they put gates and signs, you can call the police.
But why keep inconvenience in police?
It's their job.
It's their job. So every night I'm gonna have to call the police just to keep people from shooting guns and
Like your neighborhood.
It's my neighborhood, so I'm asking that they no longer be able to continue a cemetery.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Mayor, uh, if you would, Madam Mayor wants to make a comment.
Ma'am, have you ever called the police?
Yes.
So you're saying this is every night?
No, this is for birthdays, this is for just whenever, because there's always balloon releases.
But whenever you call the police, have the police come out?
Not all the time, but most of the time.
Okay, so you're saying that the police does not come out every time you call them. But if they're carrying on for as long as you say they're carrying on, surely if you call the police and within a timely manner they don't show up, I would call back and explain what's going on.
So we're just defeated. That's exactly how I feel, defeated. Because now we, the only other option is to I mean, if anybody lived where I live and had to deal with this, I promise you, you would not want this to be going on.
Okay, but as the chairman said, I mean, that whole entire area is, is nothing but cemeteries, correct?
It's
Pine and Gil and
It's on the opposite side. Now, yes, they've crossed over and now we're dealing, we're getting
And I don't know exactly
It's hard.
and where, but I know that area is predominantly, you know, Pine Street.
The, the right side behind the store is cemetery. When they crossed over, now it's becoming another cemetery. That wasn't always there. And now it's just like ridiculous. I mean, you have to duck so that you don't get hit by a stray bullet. Because they're shooting in the air, but they're getting on you like this. This is too much. I have kids and grandkids I'm trying to protect as well as myself. And to ignore this and allow this is, is not fair. I, I've lived there. I had this little home built and I've worked hard, worked hard. And I don't think that it's fair that we continue having to deal with this. This is I've, I've asked for a lot of change. I mean, I've asked for a fix in the past. I've been shot down so many times behind this cemetery. And to stand here now and know that they can very well do it anyway, it's just not fair.
I tell you, if, if we have a, uh, a recommendation and if we put those things into the recommendation, it has to be followed, otherwise they're gonna be closed down. The, the fact of life is, with all due respect, whether we, we do this addition or not, there's still graves out there. You're not gonna move all the graves. There's still people gonna come out, but if we try to put some fencing and put some gates, maybe we can help you. And now that the mayor knows about the situation, maybe a phone call to the police chief would help you a little bit better.
And that's perfectly fine and I get all that, but I'm saying that those are the bodies that are already there with due respect. So if we continue on putting more and more bodies there, then we're gonna, we're bringing more and more people. So that's all I'm asking. If we just stop with the bodies and take it somewhere else, give us a break.
All right. Thank you very much, ma'am. We have heard from the applicant and also the neighborhood folks, so I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve file two thirty-one with conditions. Gates, fences, signage, uh, postings where the neighbors can call the police. That's all I can think of.
Cameras, camera, security cameras.
Cameras.
Security in place for the neighbors.
Mr. Boone, you're getting that?
Yes, sir, and I assume that's just around this phase. Is, is
Yes, sir. Please do.
This is, this is a specific use permit. You can put reasonable conditions on it. Should those conditions be violated, then the specific use permit can be withdrawn.
Are security cameras reasonable?
That's for the commission, for the council ultimately to determine.
I, I'm not sure if the security cameras would do anything for anybody. The fen- fences, signage, gates, when you put a sign up and it says it's unlawful to be there after hours, the police have something to hang their hat on. And that's probably to me is more important than anything else.
Okay, can I revamp my motion
Please do.
to remove the security cameras, but
Can you start from over, please?
And fences.
Now fences, are you talking the perimeter of the subject, specific use permit to date?
I would think so.
Yeah.
Discussion.
Does everybody understand the motion and the additions to the motion, the, the conditions? Yes?
Yes.
Great. We have a motion. I'll look for a second. You have a second with?
With the conditions.
With the conditions. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition?
No.
No. Okay, we have one no and the motion passes. Thank you. I'm sorry that the neighbors are going through this. Hopefully we have helped this and the mayor would, would pay some attention to that special requirements. Thank you. Mr. Boone?
Okay. Uh, file PZ twenty twenty-one two thirty-seven is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow funeral service and embalming and storage facility at a GCND two, general commercial multifamily dwelling district two district. Uh, Bruce Art's Mortuary is requesting a specific use permit to allow funeral service and embalming at twenty-two twenty Calder Avenue. Uh, the nearly thirty thousand square foot property was previously occupied by controlled fluids. As this previous use was just office space and storage, some changes may be needed to accommodate for embalming. Uh, Bruce Art's Care Center where embalming is performed is currently located two blocks away at two thousand McFadden. Uh, this is an internal operation that is run by licensed professional embalmers. Uh, they would like to relocate the facility to this property and utilize the open warehouse space for inventory and supplies. Uh, five to ten full-time staff are expected, uh, to be located at this facility. Let me go ahead and show the slides. This is the property on Calder outlined in red. Another view of the property. This is a view of the property across Calder to the north. Also to the north, to the northeast along McFadden, uh, to the east along Calder, to the southeast, to the south. And we have distributed twenty-eight notices to area property owners. We have received, uh, two responses, one in favor from a Mr. Harris Fontenot and one in opposition, um, from the trustees of the Chamber House. And I'll go ahead and read, um, the Chamber House next door, the Heritage Society, um, let's see, they'd like to, they, let's see, I have a little trouble reading this. They would like assurances, uh, that there be no odors since we have outdoor events. And so they've also, um, attached an email here, but I believe Mr. Peyton is here. He may want to speak, uh, when the item comes up. But based on this application, uh, staff is recommending approval of this application. Uh, subject to the following condition. Number one, construction plans meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements for the city's backflow, pretreatment and/or fog program. To that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions for Mr. Boone? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Mr. Bruce Art, good afternoon. Are you coming?
Yes.
All right, let's do it. We gotta get home sometimes.
Good afternoon. Jamie Tepick, I'm here on behalf of Bruce Art's two thousand McFadden.
Thank you, ma'am. Any, anything you want to add to Mr. Boone's report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Boone. Um, I just wanted to clarify that we'll, we will not be conducting any funeral services at this location. Um, this will be specifically, um, a private facility for our use for, um, warehouse and inventory storage as well as, um, relo- relocating our care center that's currently at two thousand McFadden, just two blocks away. And, um, to address the concern from our neighbors about the odor, I would just ask, um, if they have had any issues with the previous tenant with any odors. Um, it is a brick and mortar facility. To my knowledge, we have not had any odor complaints at any of our six funeral homes, so that would just be my one question for them.
Any questions for the lady?
I have a question. Is this a purchase, you're gonna purchase the building or is it a rental?
Yes, ma'am. We hope to purchase if this application is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much, ma'am. And anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, Mr. Peyton.
Good afternoon.
How are you, sir?
My name's Kevin Peyton. I'm with Hancock Whitney Banks Trust Department with the trustees of the Chambers House Museum adjacent to the applicant's, uh, prospective property and just wanted to touch base with you guys. We were just looking didn't fully understand if that permit process extended onto the property for a long period of time. The Chambers House Museum runs obviously for a museum and we're trying to make sure that that, uh, uh, continues to run as such. The Heritage Society of Beaumont occupies the property and runs it as that museum and trying to maintain the viability of it. Uh, we'll say from a, I believe from a perspective of it, we're very pleased that the Bruce Art family's looking at doing something to turn their property into, uh, something productive. Just wanted to make assurances that whatever adjacent or around our property, uh, uh, activities occur aren't detrimental to that museum's operation on it. We have as a trustees obligation to that, uh, foundation and, uh, I don't know what assurances we can get and it's not necessarily, I'm concerned about the Bruce Arts, but anybody occupant thereafter of, of what they would do with it. So, uh, I think we're very well pleased that, uh, the Bruce Arts and their family, the community mindedness have always been, uh, good within that neighborhood and, uh, also like to reach out to you guys as well as city council. Uh, that section of Calder is going through a rough patch for whatever reason, social issues or whatever. So, uh, don't know what the solution to that is, but we've got, uh, numerous vacant properties around there and that's an important part of the city. Uh, the whole area, so, uh, encourage anybody who's got any insights to that, but, uh, did want to speak on that behalf, so, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Peyton. You're always very polite.
That's what my mother said.
All right, uh, well, ladies, uh, you heard Mr. Peyton. I think you already alluded to that, so I, I don't think there is any reason for you to come back, but you do understand what his concern is. And you're gonna make sure that you do not have any od- odors to discomfort his patrons. Thank you. Uh, we heard, is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Parigi and my office is at four four five North Fourteenth Street. And I must say, I've known the Bruce Art family a long time and they are the last person that will let you down. So with that being said, that was a joke, guys. Y'all should have caught on to that. But with that being said, Bruce Art family, I'd love to have them as a neighbor because they will improve the neighborhood immensely. Uh, Mr. Khan had it and he didn't do anything, but just, he fixed it up, but it looked like a wine garden store still. I think the Bruce Art family, you saw what they did with the L M Williams Funeral Home down the street from there, and I think they'll do a nice job with this. And I would hope that we would have no problem getting this approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? And Anita, is, is the timer broke on the, on our thing in there or? Well, it ne- it needs to be on, so, okay. He, he went over his thirty seconds a lot of times. There's nobody else volunteering to speak, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from the applicant and also one of the neighbors, so I would look for a motion.
I move.
We approve two thirty-seven.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Boone, two three eight.
Okay, file PZ twenty twenty-one two three eight is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a communication tower in an LI Light Industrial District. David Botcheneck is requesting a specific perm, specific use permit to allow a communications tower in an LI Light Industrial District in the sixty-three hundred block of Walden Road. Uh, K F D M has been forced to relocate due to the future Interstate ten, uh, project. Uh, one requirement for their new facility is a one hundred and fifty-foot self-supporting transmission tower. The proposed tower would be similar in appearance to an existing cell tower on the south side of Walden Road. Uh, the tower would be located at the rear of the, uh, proposed new facility. And these are the slides. You can see the, uh, the property outlined here in red, um, along Walden Road. This is a view of the subject property. A view of the proposed site plan and you can see a little X, uh, to the s- towards the top of the site plan, just south of the, uh, parking lot that runs east-west. That's where the proposed tower is to be located. Uh, this is a subject property vacant, uh, to the east, southeast and to the south. And in the staff report, you referenced a, this, a transmit, a telecommunication tower and that's, that's the one we were referring to there to the south. A view to the west. And we, staff did distribute ten notification letters, uh, to neighboring property owners. We received, uh, zero in opposition, received one in favor, uh, from Constantine Magus, um, property owner in the area. Uh, but based on the, uh, proposed, uh, project, staff is recommending approval of this specific use permit without condition. Are there any questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Is the audi- uh, is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir. If you would state your name and address and give us any additional information you might have.
I'm David Osmo. I'm the regional engineering director for the Sinclair Broadcast Group, the parent company of, uh, K F D M at twenty-nine fifty-five, uh, IH ten. And, um, we're, uh, looking for a new location to set up our studios and continue serving the community. Said we've been at the present location since nineteen sixty-one and we're looking for a new location out on Walden Road. Uh, we have under contract a three-acre property of land. The one hundred fifty-foot tower is necessary for us to, uh, establish a studio to transmitter microwave link to our towers in Viter. So we will continue to broadcast from the towers in Viter. If there's any concern about RF radiation, the microwave dishes that we're installing are very the microwave dishes that we're installing are very, they're like spotlights. They're very, very focused. This would be no problem to anybody in the area.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the applicant and also the staff, and I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve, file 238.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. And in opposition, the ayes have it. Mr. Boone, we have case number PZ 2021-241, and I have asked to, to sign a paper that I'm going to recuse myself. We have a property within 200 feet, and our vice chair would conduct this case. Yeah. I would sign the papers.
Okay, Chris, file 241.
Okay. File PZ 2021-242 is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow an on-premise, oops, excuse me, that's the wrong stuff. Pardon me. All right. PZ 2021-241 is to consider a specific use permit to allow two driveways accessing the north cul-de-sac of West Lucas in a GCMD 2 district. Darlene Hannah is requesting a specific use permit to allow two driveways accessing the north cul-de-sac of West Lucas in a GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 district at 622 West Lucas. In February of 2011, Ms. Hannah was approved for a specific use permit at this location. The approved site plan did not have any driveways accessing the residential cul-de-sac to the east. In 2016, a driveway was poured and eventually permitted by building codes, but without the approval of the Planning Division. Now Ms. Hannah has applied to pour a second driveway accessing the same residential cul-de-sac. The new driveway is for a proposed cookie company. Let me go ahead and show the staff, or the slides, rather. So you can see the property in question is outlined in red. And you can see the cul-de-sac in question is to the east of that West Lucas Drive, which comes off of East Drive. This is another view of the property in question. And then, as, as mentioned, this, the original site plan back in 2011 had the driveways coming off of West Lucas, but not show the driveway coming off of the cul-de-sac to the east. Or the, there's actually another driveway to the south, which comes off of the West Lucas Drive cul-de-sac that comes off of Calder in question. That, that driveway was added in, we believe in 2015. And this is just some historical aerials of the site. You can see the building is relatively new back in 2014, with no cul-de-sacs to either, or excuse me, no driveways to either cul-de-sac. This is 2015, more construction. 2017, where the cul-de-sac to the north and the south was added. These are some, our traffic engineering group had some cameras put up to see the traffic that feeds into the snow cone stand at the existing driveway off of the residential street to the east. So again, you can see, if you look at the times of these, 2:45, 4:08, it tends to be later in the day, but there, there is some traffic congestion backing up off of that driveway. This is the proposed site plan. You can see the structure in question here with the surrounding parking. And if you look to the back of the, the structure coming off the residential road, you can see the proposed new driveway. Although not shown on the plan, it, my understanding is the, the traffic would access through the parking lot in a one-way fashion. This is a view of the subject property from the south looking northward. View of the, so, this is the subject property looking east. And I believe the proposed driveway would wrap around the corner of the building there where those electrical service boxes are. And this is a view from the cul-de-sac towards the, the building looking west. And again, the idea, I believe, is for the driveway to wrap around the back of the building there. Also, the subject property looking more towards the northwest, where the existing driveway is, which services the Snow Cone shop. This is a view to the southwest. A view to the west. A view to the northwest. The north. And the northeast. And the east. And we did send out 16 notices to area property owners, and we have received two in favor. But we have received six in opposition. Now, four of those in opposition are from four different properties that line the cul, the residential street to the east, but they are the same owner, but four separate properties. And the comments in opposition are, "I own a house, a duplex, and a vacant lot on West Lucas. This is not a through street. It's not wide or long enough to accommodate the two proposed driveways for drive-through lanes. One of the driveways included in the request is the drive-through lane access for Quinchi's. Most afternoons, there are numerous cars in line for the drive-through that sometimes reach all the way to East Drive. This traffic interferes with the intersection of East Drive and Main West Lucas, which is already a much-used intersection. The cars in line at Quinchi's drive-through often make it difficult to back out of the driveway at my duplex. Several times, the cars have had to back up so I could exit my driveway. If this driveway was not included in the applicant's original specific use permit, it should have never been built and should not be approved this time. The second driveway in the crest would, in this request, would have traffic in the opposite direction and would have the pickup window on the backside of the applicant's building. Allowing this driveway to be built would add additional traffic to our residential street." And that's essentially the summary there. And we have another in opposition from High Cinderella, Port Arthur Inc. Oh, they're in favor, I'm sorry. This is Daddy O's Burger on Calder. So they're in favor of the application. My apologies. In opposition, let's see. And I believe Mr. Porigi's still here, so he may speak to this request. But this is the Porigi's Family Limited. The property Calder Highlands Lots 2 through 5, Block 13, simply stating they are opposed. And also, let's see. And Mr. Najad, owner of 4210 Calder, is also in opposition. Based on the application, staff is recommending approval of this application. However, following additional review, and I believe Brandon Belair is our traffic engineer. He's in the audience, and he can maybe speak better to this. I know we, we took an additional look at the, the site plan that was submitted in 2011. The site plan that was submitted to this doesn't match what's on the ground. And so it's not to say they could not reconfigure the internal circulation of the driveways and the parking spaces, and that may be their intention. But based on what's the ground, what's on the ground now, it doesn't seem to match either what's on this site plan or what was approved back in 2011. So again, a Mr. Belair is in the audience, can, can speak to that. But with that, are there any questions of staff?
I just need to clarify this. So I was here in 2011 when we approved that. There was no driveway in a specific use permit, yet they poured a driveway on their own without approval in 2016. Is that correct?
So there is a better process now. The, the approval, the specific, the site plan which is shown before you back in 2011 did not show driveways to either of those cul-de-sacs. In 2015, we believe there was a permit pulled for a driveway to the cul-de-sac to the south. In 2016, there was a permit pulled for a driveway to the cul-de-sac to the north.
Did that come before P&amp;Z, the one in 2015?
It, it did not.
And 2016?
No, ma'am.
Then how did it go anywhere?
We, we believe they pulled a driveway permit, which at the time, those processes were not integrated. So the situation now is we have a new permitting system where building codes is integrated with planning and engineering. And usually driveways go to engineering. They're usually pretty straightforward, pretty clear-cut. However, in this case, site plan specific, we know it's an issue. It really should have gone through planning and zoning. And for whatever reason, it just did not. The new process with a new computer now, it does go through that. So in this case, now that we have a more refined system, everybody's involved. Planning and zoning caught it this time and said, hey, you can't add another driveway unless the specific use permit gets amended. So that's, in this case, it worked, and so the system worked, and so we caught, we caught it.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Is the applicant in the audience? Yes, sir. Yes, please come forward and give us your name and address, please.
My name's Brian Donegan. I'm the co-owner of the Cookie Factory, and my mother owns the, the property. And what I did is I went to planning and zoning, or talked to Boyd Myers about getting this approved before I ever spent the first dollar, because I didn't want this to happen again. When I built the building, this is red tags that they gave me when I first built it. So I went to Boyd. I asked him, what do I need to do? He told me everything I needed to do, draw the plans up, drew the plans up, come down to the last minute. I spent $50,000 to get this cookie factory going. And the only way this cookie factory can work is through a drive-through, because everything on the inside feeds through the drive-through. You can't come inside the building, first of all, because of the mask. You know, we don't know how long this is going to last, so I thought of this, I say, let me benefit Beaumont. Let me make a drive-through that, that's convenient for people to come in, get their cookies, drive on out. Because you know nowadays, you can't go anywhere in the city of Beaumont, broad daylight. You go into Walgreens or whatever, you get robbed. You go to the Waffle House. They had a fight this other night, you can't even go eat. This benefits people. It brings revenue to the city of Beaumont. I spent $50,000, got plans approved, just like we did in 2016 for the other driveway. Quinchi's is the one, went and got that done. They got that driveway poured. I was on-site when the city inspector come and inspected it to make sure it tied in the driveway right. I went and got this approved, stamped, come back up to get my permit to pour that, to drive through, because they had already approved it through the engineering. They didn't catch it until I spent the money, okay? Then they tell me I can't do it because of, it has to go to planning and zoning. But why wasn't that caught before I spent the money and got a, words right there approved, stamped approved? Now they're telling me I can't. This business cannot function without this drive-through. This drive-through is not going to, it does not, I do not lose one parking spot from where it's at, where it's written. There was a miscommunications in it, you know? Once, why, why give engineering a stamp to approve something? Then someone goes out and spends their hard-earned money and then come back and say, I can't do it. You know, somebody, somebody dropped the ball here. If I would have been told, no, you can't do it, before you go to planning and zoning, I'd have done that. I wouldn't have waited to spend my money and then come up and say, no, I can't. I mean, that's what happened to this. That's why this, this is so many of these. And I kept these just for, for souvenirs. I didn't want to go through it again. But here I am again, going through the same thing again. So, I mean, I, I don't know what else to say, you know? What I'm going to do is benefits Beaumont. I mean, everybody, we all look around. We all like sweets, you know? I'm, I'm doing something that is going to benefit Beaumont. It ain't going to take away from Beaumont. I know everybody don't want it because it's going into a commercial, I mean, a residential cul-de-sac. First house on the corner is abandoned, it's falling down. The second house burnt, the inside burnt by arson. The next house was, is a duplex. You speak to the people that rent it, they say the house is horrible on the inside. I'm not going to affect anybody, you know? And I don't know what else to say.
Okay. Any questions of the gentleman?
620, my personal address? 622 West Lucas.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition? Yes, sir.
I have a question, maybe Mr. Boone can answer it. The, how many special use permits are there on this property?
We have one specific use permit from 2011.
Okay. Is it true that whenever the dance studio was built across the street, that this parking lot is for parking for that facility as well?
Correct. So the dance facility across Calder was built in 2009, I believe, and...
How many parking spots is that for?
So eight parking spots from the dance facility are supposed to be located on this site.
And what's the occupancy for the businesses that are already in this building?
So Brandon Belair is here, and he's got the ratios on that, and he can discuss that.
Thanks, Brandon. Come on down. Can you give us your name and address?
Brandon Belair, 801 Main Street. So for parking in a strip center, it's based on the gross floor area, leasable floor area. It's not necessarily per tenant. In this case, since the whole building is under 100,000 square feet, the parking requirement is one spot per si, six spaces per 1,000 square feet, which, if you do some math, it equates to 22 required spaces. And again, that's based on the square footage, not necessarily each individual tenant. Right now, they have 29 marked spaces. They're required 22, so they have seven that are over. Per the 2011, they need eight for the dance studio. So they are technically missing one. However, the whole site was not built per the original site plan. And there, there is some space to add, add eight spots, which would bring them, so you took the four from last time, and there's a four deficit. So they do have areas to add eight parking spaces. And that would bring them compliant with the old specific use and the current parking requirements. That's a really complicated answer, I apologize. If you have any specific questions, I can address them.
So are we under or over?
Right now, we're minus one. But they have the, they have the ability to add eight parking spaces.
And where would you add those at?
In the southeast corner, bottom right. Those are not marked, so we can't technically count them. But they are on the site plan. So those would, those would count.
All right. My next concern is, is that right now, this traffic backs all the way to Lucas. I know the pictures that y'all showed earlier, let me just show of the, of the light crowd. People get on that, that cul-de-sac area, and they block the whole road. There's no way you can get traffic going both ways right there, but what's going on at Quinchi's? And, you know, that's just going to be a disaster right there. that's just gonna be a disaster right there.
Yeah, it is.
It's a residential neighborhood and it's a dead-end street.
So what I did notice is cars do wait in the travel lane. They do wait in the opposite side of the street.
Right.
If this were to get approved, I would just see that as being an issue between the drivers themselves to move over. And potentially, they are waiting in the opposite lane because they know there's no cars coming. If there were to be another drive-through, they could potentially see that and maybe scoot over. But for a residential street, the current traffic volumes are significantly low. So the, the volume that would be added due to this driveway, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be way out there. It would still be reasonable, per se. More than what it is now, but not, not a lot for a residential street.
So Brandon, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Aren't cul-de-sacs kind of meant to be the end of a neighborhood and kind of the quietest, most choice spot?
Typically, that's just how it ends up.
Yeah, and so on a residential street, if you add a second driveway, you're gonna bring all that traffic all the way down. And you're gonna double, at least double the traffic that's there already. Right?
It would double it, but the existing number is very low. Typical residential street sees about a thousand vehicles a day.
No, I get that. I'm just saying, just this center and adding the second driveway would double the existing traffic that's now on that street.
It would double the northbound traffic. There wouldn't be any additional southbound traffic because that would be a one-way driveway only. So they would, they would go through, they would come from the bottom, they'd go up, they would exit and they would travel northbound.
They'd come from the forty-one and then down.
That's the snow cone traffic.
Yeah.
The cookie stand, they would, they would come the opposite direction. They would wait in the parking lot at the bottom. They would drive around in the windows at the back, where it says drive.
I see.
And they would exit into the cul-de-sac. So right now, there's a significant volume of southbound traffic for the snow cone. But once they get their snow cone, they leave onto Lucas to the left. They don't go back. So this proposed driveway, it would just add to the northbound traffic, which is currently five to ten cars a day, whoever's visiting those houses.
And how did this first driveway appear?
It was approved by my predecessor because we weren't aware this was a specific use site.
But the request now is for two driveways.
And one additional.
That's fractionally two.
But actually, to bring the site plan up to, up to where it is, is two.
So we're correcting the first driveway and adding a second.
Correct.
Any other questions of Brandon? Thank you, Brandon. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition?
We have a question.
Yes, sir. Sir, if you'll come forward and give us your name and address.
Council member.
Oh, councilman. I need to put my glasses up for her. Sorry. Yes.
Something that stood out to me, I know what you said, you know, with health, do crime and you brought up Waffle House and I understand what you're saying, but to that matter, have you guys experienced things like that in this particular shopping store to bring that into the conversation for this particular address? Have you guys ever had any instances in that shopping store where you've had crime or issues?
What I'm just saying is for the safety of the people still in their car, they don't have to deal with the crime. They get their company the cookies, they drive home. They don't have to get out, walk through the mall, get mugged. I'm just saying, I built this basically, did that home. You know, that's, that's, that's why I brought it. That didn't bring up to be sarcastic or to be negative on my life, but I've lived here thirty years. And I do somewhat volunteer work for this city. I would have been in my personal vehicle up to here, rescuing people out here. I'm just asking, a little, like, to open my business up, make some money.
And gentlemen, if we can do this, you're gonna have an opportunity to answer questions from the audience after everyone's had a chance to speak. So, yes, sir, thank you. Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak either in favor or opposition? And please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Darlene Hannah and I'm the one that owns the property and that's my son that did the talking. I just had one thing.
And your address, Darlene?
Oh, I live at Winnie, seven seventy Carolyn Street, Winnie, Texas.
Thank you.
Okay. To answer her, his question, whenever we first got that strip center, my shop, which is the Dance Emporium, which I've been in business for thirty-six years in Beaumont, and I was located at the dance studio. In other words, the dan- I was there and then the dance studio was set. Now I moved my business, so we had two businesses there. I moved my business over to the strip center. So that alleviated the four parking spots that we had to barry from across there. You understand, or you following what I'm saying? So that's the reason why the talk, the parking is better, you know. And then the other thing is, the other man, he explained it real good. Our drive-through is going to come in from the back and go out. Quincy's comes in. So it's not gonna be, we're not backing up behind Quincy's. We're not coming in that same way. Yeah, who said this? Did somebody say something?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Anyway, so that's what I wanted to make clear, that I didn't want y'all to think that we're gonna be both going the same way. We're gonna be going out and they come in.
Thank you, Darlene. Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in, yes, ma'am? Yes, sir.
How you doing?
Good.
My name is Manuel Ramirez. I live at six ninety-eight West Lucas Drive. I'm the owner of the corner house right there on East Drive at Lucas. Has y'all seen the photos of all the cars? They line up East Drive, Lucas, North and South, and all through the cul-de-sac. We've called the police department several times because of the traffic. People can't come down East Drive, they can't turn off on Lucas to East or come back out. Adding another driveway is just gonna be like crazy. Seems like they put an illegal driveway already. They didn't give us a chance to vote on it or, or question about it or anything. So I don't think it's a very good idea.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak?
My name is Donna Harris and I am the owner of Quincy's. And I live at one thirty-seven Rolling Hills Drive, Lumberton. And when we looked at the spot here to put Quincy's, we had to have a drive-through. I mean, that was, and so we got with Brian and worked it out and came to the city and got it approved. Now, I don't know what all the underlying thing, I just know it was approved. Now, how they did it or didn't do it, I don't know. I just know that it was approved. At one point, we got a red sticker on the door saying that the driveway was not approved and that we needed to cease operations. So I went to the city and told them, yes, because they said we didn't have a permit for it. But I showed them all that and they said, yeah, you're good to go. We talked to, I think the guy's name was Carlos originally that was help, was doing this. Anyway, so they said, you're good to go. It's not a problem. So we've been doing it. Now, I know we've had, one person's called me to complain about the traffic. And, you know, I told them that we would try, you know, we try to get them through, and we get them through pretty fast. And we, it is a Pacific time of the day. It's usually from like two-thirty till five, five-thirty. That's our busiest time. And then that even slows down. That's just through the hot summer months. And then it slows down considerably. So I, the only thing with what I've been hearing other people do here, I mean, we can post signs saying, do not block driveways. You know, we can put that out there and try to do something like that. But other than that, I really don't know. You know, and ask them to be considerate and please don't, you know, block the driveways. But I don't know what else we could do.
Okay, thank you.
For that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And, well, one more thing. And the, when we got so busy was during COVID. People quit coming in. Because it is where you can come in and sit down. So they are starting to come in more now. And my traffic, with all of my, you know, things that I look at to see what our progress is, it is not as many coming through the drive-through now. So.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Eugenia Coffin. I live at thirty-nine ninety-nine North Street. I'm the person who owns the four properties that I turned in my property reply as a negative. Mr. Ramirez, who I didn't know he was gonna be here today, but on that map, his house is on the corner. I own the next vacant lot and the next two properties. When the traffic person discussed about the northbound traffic not being very much, that's because I'm renovating those properties. The applicant spokesperson, when he said that one of those properties was not in good shape, American Real Estate says that one unit's worth thirteen hundred. The other one right now have rented to a friend for a thousand a month. I've spent a whole lot of money on this. The rent house that he referenced that was arson, yes, the house at the very end of the street is in really bad shape. I'm trying, I have put in an offer to purchase that. I've spent a lot of money in this. I have owned from West Lucas all the way to thirty-nine ninety-nine North Street. It's over an acre. My mother owns the next house, thirty-nine ninety-seven North Street. I have invested a lot of money in this. I intend these to be income-producing, viable housing. I don't know, and this situation is terrible. When I go to the property, so when you're talking about traffic coming out northbound on West Lucas, yeah, there isn't a whole lot there yet. Right now, I'm renovating the rent house. It was destroyed one hundred percent on the inside by an arsonist. That was about two months ago. They started construction last week. It will be available for rent probably, I hope, in about six weeks. It was rented before for, I believe it was eleven hundred dollars a month. I've spent money on these properties. This is a terrible solution to him giving back to Beaumont. When I turn from, like I said, I live on North Street, when I turn into, go down West Lucas and I have to go in the left-hand lane to pass all the cars that are on, waiting in line for Quincy's. Quincy's is great. It's popular. Beaumont needs that, you know, you're successful. It's just not a good drive-through situation. Any other place you go in Beaumont and wait in a drive-through, even Daddy O's, Tony's Barbecue, Dunkin' Donuts, you're waiting on commercial property. You're not waiting on a city residential street. That's the problem. Now you're adding traffic going northbound. Okay. I don't know how you fit another car in there. Those, that street is not three quarters wide. I'm gonna be waiting and my tenants in the future will be waiting in line with the people getting their snow cones to get to their houses. That is not good planning. This is not about a curb cut. This is about access to our properties. This is ridiculous. I mean, I hate to be emotional about it, but that's how I feel about it. It's just, I know what good work y'all do. I appreciate your time. My father served on planning and zoning for years. I know how important your recommendations are to city, to city council. This is one that does not need to be approved. This is not a curb cut. This affects traffic and it affects the property values of those homeowners and property owners, both residential and commercial on West Lucas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor or opposition?
My name is Sam Perigi and my office is at four-four-five North Fourteenth Street here in Beaumont. I spent better part of this morning sending a dissertation to Chris Boone so he could read it as far as why we were opposed to it. We being my cousin Linda Satchetana, Linda Perigi Satchetana. We own the, for heaven's sake, location. And we were opposed to this. We're opposed to, I'm opposed to it just because I have this same situation on South Level Street. We had a place of business at five forty South Level Street. Guy opens it up, does well. My next-door neighbor puts in a barbecue stand called Link Link. And go there on a Saturday or go there on a Friday and go watch Link Link. I have no, I'm not opposed to anybody being successful at their business. And he is very successful. But he's got traffic backed up down Level Street. And anything anybody's done, anything about it, plus he's got a smoker and the smoke. My guy has a garage door in the back and when the smoker's going, smoke bellows into his location or into our building and he's having problems with all that. That being said, two things I worry about. Number one is how far off the property line is this building? Normally, it's ten feet. Because that's gonna be a small driveway to get a car through there. I'm glad to hear that the car's coming from the opposite, from the north, traveling south. But that car's gotta make a turn and then that car's gotta go in between there. Is that correct? And there's a fence somewhere in there, I believe. Is that fence coming down? And are we gonna get on city property with this driveway? I don't know. But the other question was, the gentleman that owns it, and I feel very sorry for what's going on here because it's not a good circumstance, but he just told me, he just, I just realized that what he said, you're gonna have twice, twice as much traffic backing up on that road going around Lucas or going around East Drive because everybody is gonna be coming from that corner down East Lucas or West Lucas, I should say, but the north side of it, and gonna come in and the cookie people are gonna go continue on down the road a little bit and get into that drive-through lane. And the Quincy's people are gonna turn first. So you're gonna, you just doubled the traffic. If that cookie place does as well as it probably will, and yes, I agree with him, I'll, I don't know that I'll go wait in line for it, but you could tell that I eat a lot of cookies. But that being said, we're gonna have twice the amount of traffic backing up down toward East Lucas. And I think we're gonna, we're compounding our problem the way it's set up now. I was under the impression and then I realized that, I mean, you could do it this way. I was thinking the traffic would go, my concept was, is to go through the parking lot, through there, and then out that way. So at least you had traffic going out and traffic coming in. It doesn't help Sissy Coffin, but I'm just saying that at least you have that. Now, all the traffic's going the same direction and I don't think that's what you want. So. Okay. If I understand you correctly, so what you're telling me is your car, if I'm going to Charlie's or Charlene or whatever, the Cookie Factory, I'm gonna go through the parking lot and I'm gonna turn, go north down that driveway. Is that correct? I just asked you a question. Just answer the question. Comes in from Calder. Calder's not even close to this, so how do you come in from Calder?
Excuse me, let's, let's, everybody calm down a little bit. You will have an opportunity. Chris, do we have a
No, we don't have a pointer.
Little marker thingy?
We have a mouse.
So they'll come through this driveway?
Yes. Okay. Okay. I still have a, and that's fine. So now you have traffic going both directions.
And the width of the driveway is shown, or the width between the building and the property line as shown on the site plan is, is shown as fifteen feet.
Okay. Doesn't look it from the picture, doesn't look it from on-site, but if he says it's fifteen feet, I'm not gonna argue with him about it. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Okay, yes, ma'am.
I have questions.
Sure.
Hello, I'm Laurie Leester and I live at twelve forty Wilchester Circle here in Beaumont. I am an investor with Sissy on her properties across the street. She has three properties and she bought them five years ago. And she has been putting money back into them to improve them for her future. These are properties that, because she's the adjoining property owner, that she would very much like to upgrade and have them be affordable and nice places for people to live in the west end. and nice places for people to live in the west end of Beaumont. She has, the house that was burned is currently being renovated. She has insurance money. She's going to be adding more money to improve it even further. And she has made an offer on the house across, next door to her that's at the end of the cul-de-sac. What I have passed out to you is a photograph of the back of the subject property. It shows the window there in the doorway. That will be the drive-through window. I'm standing in the driveway of one of her houses, looking toward that building. And you can see from the photograph, the fence and the cars will make a turn around the building, go in front of that drive-through window, and empty out into the cul-de-sac directly opposite of this driveway. Now, take into consideration that there is yet another driveway to the left, of the left side of that picture that you cannot see on the, on the house that she's hoping to purchase and improve and renovate. So this traffic is backing up on West Lucas all the time, to the point where people can't back out of their driveways, because they're taking up that one lane of traffic. So if there's traffic coming out of the cookie store down that way, and, you know, I'm sure it will be successful, that's a lot of traffic for people trying to get in and out of their houses. So the plan is, is to have these houses up and running as quickly as possible with occupants. And they've been rented before. The location is terrific. I think you will also see in that photograph the fence to the left. And then, I don't know what in the world the radius is on the turn around the corner of the building. That should be taken into consideration. And also, if it was a specific use permit, there really should be a fence across the back of that property to screen it from the residences across the street. Truly, that should happen. There have been problems in the past with, you can see on the, kind of where the N is on the New Drive riding. There, that's around the cul-de-sac, it's grass. And people, I don't know if it's this subject property owner or other people, have just put trash out there for the city to pick up. They have not been put in dumpsters. It's, it's our understanding that the subject property pays or has city pickup on their garbage. But sometimes garbage is just placed out there for the city truck to come down and pick up. And you know if there's lots of trash, that they can't get down there to pick up garbage cans. And two, if people put the garbage cans on the curb, you know, that's gonna be a problem. I wanted to make a comment that Maida, Frank Maida, said he sent in a form in opposition. You didn't mention that you had that.
I know that I do.
Okay. And also, the corner property owner, Mr. Ramirez, is here and spoke in opposition. So that's a number of property owners that do. I was, served on planning and zoning for fourteen years with several of you all, and I know it's a difficult situation. But like Dr. Najad said, sometimes you just have to make tough decisions.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, just a clarification to what Ms. Leester said. Maida Properties did send in a response, but it was in favor.
Chris, can you put up the aerial photograph again? That one?
Yes.
So, we're talking about the driveway being fifteen, or the building being fifteen feet from the property line. That's on the north side. On the south side, that can't be fifteen feet, by the way the red line cuts in.
I'm sorry? Yeah, so just again, the aerial, the aerial photo and the property line may not be exact just because of the way, that's J K appraisal district data with our data. So we, for planning purposes in general, we can use this, but if, we would not wanna measure it. For example, the cemetery earlier, there was a question, so we asked if they survey it. And again, so the, you know, again, looking at it, it is tight, and, you know, it indeed may be less than fifteen. It's just fifteen is what they're showing on the site plan.
So you show fifteen up in this picture where the car is? Because I blew it up on my iPad. I could read the fifteen. But the other drawing that was up there, that red line is a straight line, and it implies that the fifteen feet go all the way down.
Right. And again, if you look at the proposed site plan, which shows the fifteen, it doesn't match what's on the ground. In other words, the parking arrangement there, what's shown in the aerial, doesn't match what, even goes back to 2011.
Okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor or opposition? Okay, the applicant, you've had some, several negative comments. If you would like to approach and address those. Do you have any comments regarding your neighbors and anyone else who had negative comments?
Well, first of all, on his, if you go out there where the fence line to the back of the building is fourteen point eight to the corner, from my survey, that I got surveyed by, by the engineering company when we built it. Because when we built the building, it had to be offset from the property from where we built it. And that was the first thing that we'd come out and done. That was the first time I got one of these little things right here. Then we had to move it again. And we had, it's fourteen point, not exact, fourteen point eight or fourteen point two. You can measure it to the property line. When we bought this piece of property, we bought it from the city of Beaumont whenever they auctioned it off, because it used to be a church there whenever they built the new Lucas. And that's where we set the building. I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know what else to say about the negative comments. I mean, we're going north, there, Quinches, Quinches comes in from the, from the north side of it. We come in and head north. So with the traffic's crossing. There's no one ever on Lucas on the cul-de-sac. There's no one out there. And talking about the garbage piled up on the corner there, that garbage comes from the apartment complex that's across the street. Everybody, when they move out, that's where they bring all their trash. I have called the city a million times. They come out and they put a sign out there for thirty days that says, "Do not dump here." But nobody, they still do it. When their dumpster's full, that's where they bring the trash. It's not our trash. And I can't, twenty-four hour surveillance, you know, I've called them many a times. You know, they talk about how much parking we have, that we don't have enough parking. If you go out there on the spot, there's thirty-eight spots marked in the yellow stripes. I, my building is forty-six hundred square feet, and I think the building to the north of us is forty-eight hundred feet. They have a tequila bar in there that has fourteen parking spots, fourteen, with seventy-two chairs inside the building. Do the math, where they park. Their traffic overflows across the street, which is okay. But can my, can my customers also flow across the street and park if they wanted to? Or is it just for the tequila bar to be able to park and go across the street? You know, you gotta give and take some here. You know, if we want this town to get better, you know, you gotta give and take a little bit. That's all, you know, that's all I'm asking for. My, all my traffic will be on my property. Whenever they come off of Lucas and turn in, there's a hundred and seventy-six feet from the point of my property to the back of my property. So my traffic will be in this. Quinches will come down and come around. Their traffic is no worse than Kelly High School. I mean, not Kelly, St. Anne's, on a major road. Whenever they go pick up their kids, they're backed up past I-ten. It's just part of this town growing, you know? What are we all supposed to do? Set at home? You know, the traffic, traffic is traffic. Go to Houston. Go anywhere. Traffic is everywhere. But that's how, that, that shows that people are out doing things. People are out spending money, you know, because there's traffic. You know, that's, that's all I got to say.
Okay, Councilman, did we get your question answered earlier?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify if he had any issues on this property versus someone else you mentioned. That's all I wanted to clarify. If I had any issue? Yeah, I'm rocking on. Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we're going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion or discussion regarding file two forty-one?
Make a motion to deny request.
Check it.
We have a motion and a second to deny file two forty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is denied.
Thank you very much, Madam Co-Chair. I appreciate your, your conduct in the meeting. We're gonna go into PZ two zero two one two forty-two. Mr. Boone?
Okay. File PZ twenty twenty-one dash two forty-two is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow on-premise consumption of beer and wine at a convenience store in a G C M D, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling Two District. Let's see. Gurnum Sadar is requesting a specific use permit to allow on-premise consumption of beer and wine at the convenience store at this location at thirty-five twenty-nine North Major Drive. Mr. Gurnum has purchased a number of daiquiri machines and is currently selling daiquiris to go. He would like to sell these daiquiris and other beer and wine products for onsite consumption. Although Crystals does sell a number of fried foods, it is predominantly a convenience store. Onsite consumption of alcohol is a convenience, in a convenience store, rather, would create a bar-type atmosphere and therefore requires a specific use permit in a G C M D or G C M D two zoning district. Hours for daiquiri sales would be Monday through Friday, seven a.m. to midnight. Saturday, seven a.m. to one a.m., and Sunday, noon to midnight. Although Mr. Sadar has requested the required certificates and permits for his convenience store that serves food, not all of these permits have been completed. Let me go ahead and walk you through the slides. This is the location of the convenience store on the west side of Major. You may recognize this is the, the area we annexed a few years back into the city, just south of the Providence on Major Center, to the north. Another view of the subject property. This is the site plan of the subject property. View of Crystals. This is an interior view of the Crystals, just to get you a sense of the back corner there on that left, left frame is the fried food, well, foods to go, I should say. And then you can see the convenience store in the balance. If you look at the kind of far end of the right frame, there's a doorway back there which leads to the, to the game room. Let's see, this is a view to the north, again, the Providence development. To the east. To the south. And we did send out nineteen notices to area property owners. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. We are recommending approval of this application, subject to the following conditions. Number one, Crystals must obtain a completed certificate of occupancy and must complete an active food permit with the city of Beaumont. And number two, must meet all requirements by water utilities for any water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow and/or pre-treatment programs. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Yeah. You say they don't even have a certificate of occupancy and they're operating?
Well, a completed certificate of occupancy. So I believe it's a new owner, and so they have to go back through. When you change ownership, you gotta go back through the process and go back through the inspection process, so.
So you can actually operate without a certificate of occupancy?
For a reasonable period of time, yes.
What is the reasonable period of time?
Usually thirty to sixty days.
And how long has it been? Do you know?
I don't know.
And there's a game room in the back?
So there is an arcade in the back. It's our understanding that there were eight-liner machines, but those have been removed.
They're in the convenience store.
Okay.
They've been unfud, and we were told they'd be removed. I'm not sure if they have them removed.
Okay. That's a separate question.
Well, you're the bearer of the bad news, but it's bad enough to have game machines. Now we're gonna combine alcohol with that. That's not...
Well, that's the things that can't be combined, so if they, if the eight-liners have to go, if they intend to continue this.
Any questions for Mr. Boone? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is the occupant, I mean, the applicant in the audience? Okay, the applicant's not here. I personally, I'm not sure what's legal and what's not, but I, I have a real hard time understanding that the guy's already selling whatever he's selling. What's the motivation of aligning him to let people drink in the store? I, I can't understand that. It's not a restaurant. They said that it has to have chairs and tables, and I didn't see a chair and a table in there. So, not good. Any, anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Yes, sir?
The, uh...
I'm sorry. You know, Mr. Perigi has to be first. Come on, Sam. Go ahead. No, come on, you already stood up.
I was just gonna say, the game room is actually an arcade. You have to pack your kids, so what I'm...
I don't know. I haven't been there.
It's not, it's not a eight-liner. The words of eight-liners aren't really...
So that means that you have kids in there, right? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Perigi, it's your turn, sir.
I hadn't moved yet. My name is Sam Perigi. And I'm at four-four-five North Fourteenth Street.
And you haven't changed your name either.
That's right. I hadn't changed my name. And we own all the property across, the majority of the property across the street from there. Along Major Drive goes all the way down to Folsom. And I drove out there a couple of nights ago, and I looked around, and I had to make sure that I had the right address and everything, and I was a little confused too. So I saw this arcade, like Mike's talking about, and some other things, and I couldn't understand. So I called Chris, and Chris kind of gave me a little bit of idea behind it, but I wasn't totally sold on the idea that I was concerned about kids going in there and somehow or another alcohol and kids mixing where you could have it on premise. I can understand on premise for a beer joint, a beer establishment, a, a bar or something like that, because they cannot get in because they're underage. But in this particular case here, I worry about this, and I'm not versed enough on it because I don't, I just don't know enough about it. But I do concern myself. The kids are gonna be exposed to onsite drinking, I should say. So that was my concern.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. I do understand that the, the city staff is having their recommendation, but I would personally make a motion to deny this case.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Madam Mayor, thank you for putting up with us.
Mr. Chairman.
Please let us go home.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes.
Almost. One more item.
No, we're going home. She's ready to go home. See, she jumped up.
Okay. Yeah, appreciate it. Well, this is an item that was added from your, from your original agenda, so I appreciate if we could entertain PZ twenty twenty-one dash two seventy
Yes, sir.
to consider an arrangement between the city of Beaumont and Hardin County as to the regulations of subdivisions within the ETJ extraterritorial jurisdiction. The state legislature enacted a law back in two thousand and one that requires all municipalities and counties to enter into written agreements outlining the regulatory responsibilities of subdivision regulations. So like we talked about earlier, of course, the city of Beaumont regulates subdivisions within five miles of the city limits out into Jefferson County. Well, the same actually could apply to our ETJ in Hardin County to the north. So what we've got here is the white boundary shows the city limits. The yellow line shows the ETJ. So you can see it extends all the way past Pine Island Bayou up, and you see on the north how it kind of wraps around Lumberton. I can zoom in a little bit and show you that. I can zoom in a little bit and show you that. And quite honestly, I can't recall this ever coming up before, but we had a request about a plat up in Hardin County, which rose, raised the question as to who should regulate it, which was a big question for us. And so we, in discussion with Hardin County, the decision was that based on this two thousand and one legislation, that we need to make that determination. And so in our discussions with Hardin County, and internally, we're proposing that we not regulate plating and subdivision up in Hardin County, that we propose to enter into an agreement similar to what we did with Jefferson County in that we can regulate, and let, basically let Hardin County regulate subdivisions and plating up in Hardin County. And so that's what we as staff are recommending. And so we're seeking your, your blessings on that so that we can take a, an agreement to city council for their, their, their further consideration. Now, having said all that, if, you know, if you back up and say, well, why do we even plat and have subdivision out in the ETJ that far out from the city? The idea is that one day, conceivably, we may annex that. And if we annex that area, we want the infrastructure, streets, drainage, et cetera, to be of a certain, a certain design and a certain quality, kinda like what we talked about earlier. So the question would be, well, do we ever anticipate to annex north? Because we usually annex west, right, into further into Jefferson County. Would we ever annex north to Hardin County? And theoretically, we might. But nothing in this proposed arrangement would preclude us from doing that. So we could come back at a later time and say, you know what? Maybe there's enough development between here and Lumberton that we want to start regulating it. Or, and again, it would not preclude us from annexing to the north. So again, what we're asking is for your, your blessing to essentially continue what we've been doing for, I think we look back as far as nineteen forty-six. And that is, we haven't really been regulating plats and subdivision in Hardin County, but went, now because of that law, we need to kinda formalize that, that status quo. With any, with that, are there any questions?
Well, basically, you're saying it's another county, so leave it alone, right?
It's another county. Theoretically, we could annex the city of Beaumont into another county, but it's highly unlikely at this point.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Boone? Does everybody understand what's going on? Perfect.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the proposal?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? Mr. Boone, thank you. Madam Mayor? Thank you, ma'am. You did a great job. There was one exciting thing and you wouldn't have let me go. Thank you, guys.
Give me a call, Bob.
Yeah, hey, uh, well, seriously, we're gonna, we're gonna do something. Thank you.